Our purpose. And we are being recorded. Our purpose is to provide a permanent effective voice for women throughout Massachusetts. But we can't do that work without. The MCSW speaks your input as we work toward advancing the status of women involved in the Berkshire area and across the Commonwealth. After today's event, we'll be circulating a survey and be hoping to take the opportunity to share your voice and your feedback with us. I'd like to thank the Berkshire. Berkshire. Clearly not from Massachusetts. Berkshire.
No, Berkshire.
It's Bill Public Library who are hosting us here this evening. I've been here four years. I think it's taken at least four more to say Worcester correctly every time. And Berkshire. Berkshire. Right, I appreciate the grace that all the women in this room are providing. I'm now going to ask my sister commissioners to each briefly introduce themselves. I'm going to start with those in person and then go ahead and move on some virtually. So I will start with Commissioner Back to my right.
Hi, Rebecca Back. I am from Auburn Hills. I'm Natick and I'm the government planning chair, which means we're the committee that gets to do all of the wonderful events that we have, including public hearing today. In my day job, I'm a lawyer and I have two wonderful days and a rescue dog. And I'm so honored and thrilled to hear all your testimony today. And the best part of this job to hear what is going on for folks in their communities and how.
I'll really raise my voice for those of us who are in the room. I'm 15 months old. I'm one of their state commissioners. I am right here. I was a queen. I live in Auburn Hills, but I'm really from Western Massachusetts. Born and raised in East Hampton. Actually, I used to live in Mercer County. I lived in Adams and I lived in Stockbridge for a while. And I work for former Senator Ben Downing of Pittsfield. And I was a former regional commissioner on the Berkshire County Regional. I'm just really happy to be back here.
As a host, can you mute anyone that is speaking for you? Commissioner Hall, do I go ahead and introduce yourself?
Sure. Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Audrey Hall.
You just went ahead and muted her.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Audrey Hall. I'm a Senate President Appointee to the Commission, serving in my fourth year, the first year of my second term. Zooming in tonight from Framingham, Massachusetts, and very happy to be here with all of you. Don't want to get into any more details because I want us to move along. But it's great to be here with all of you and to see so many participants. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you. Commissioner DiCarvalo.
Hi, my name is Gabal DiCarvalo. I'm the Vice Chair of Legislative and Public Policy Committee and living in Natick and moving forward as well. We're here, your testimony.
Commissioner Fox.
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm Jeanne Fox. I'm from the town of Free Town in southeastern Mass. I'm just starting my third term. I'm a Speaker of the House Appointee and I work hand in hand with Rebecca Back on program and planning with all the good stuff we do there. My day job is with MassDOT and I'm looking forward to hearing from you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Friedman.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Liz Friedman. I'm from Hampshire County, so right next to all of you in Berkshire and have done lots of work in your beautiful county and I'm so glad to have you here. I want to just tell you that these commissioners that I get to work with are a very impressive bunch, but not more impressive than you. And you should absolutely be sharing your voice with us here. I'm so glad you're here and you should consider becoming part of your local commission and also the state commission. So can't wait to hear from all of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Liang.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nina Liang and I am the Speaker as well. Super excited to be here in my capacity as a new commissioner, but also as a treasurer. And so I'm really excited to hear all of your thoughts and your input. It drives my work specifically here in the Commission as treasurer informs what we do with our programming. And so super excited to see all of you and can't wait to hear from all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw.
Hello, I'm Sonia Shaw. I was appointed to the Commission in April of this year by President Spilka. And I am from Natick, Massachusetts, and I'm really excited to be here and hear what our guests have to say.
Commissioner Arena.
Forgive me for the technology. I'm Commissioner Tinesha Arena. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I am an appointee from the Caucus of Women Legislators. Actually, just completed my first year as a member of this commission and it's been an honor to serve. And I'm looking forward to hearing about the concerns of the folks in Pittsfield. I am in Hampden County, so that's a little bit of a hike from you all out there in the Berkshires. But your concerns are just as important and our goal is to listen to everyone across the Commonwealth. So thank you for being here and sharing.
Thank you. I'd also like to welcome the elected officials of the public service servants joining us here in person as well as online. I'd like to invite anyone to introduce themselves who's online. I know in person we have State Representative Tricia Farley, VBA, representing the third Berkshire district.
I know you're not proud of my pronunciation, just lower the.
Well, Chairwoman, yes, that applause was for you because you, third time is a charm and you got it right. I'm going to confuse you a little bit more to say that, yes, we live in the Berkshire Shire City is also, yeah, Shire City is also something that we're proud of here in Berkshire. So I'm just going to confuse you a little bit more. I really do appreciate that you are here in person. You made what we call the reverse commute here to the field of Berkshire County and just getting a little bit of idea of what it's like for us when we want to participate in our government, that it is a long drive. It is a long ride and it is harder for us to access our government. A little closer, you might need to be louder. So, and you know, I figure we appreciate those from what you termed Western Massachusetts that are on this mission. I refer you all as coming from the Midwest. Just want to say we here in Berkshire County are a true Western Mass. Something that I have been a source of frustration to my colleagues in the legislative, women's legislative caucus is to really insist, how to stand my foot, insist upon real representation from across the state and real representation on the commission, not just for women who have jobs which allow them to take time off, half day, full day, day and a half maybe, to be able to attend these meetings. We will not get the full picture of the needs of women and girls in Massachusetts if we are only getting the viewpoints of women who are in our workplace. And for that reason that I worked with my colleagues, Representative Dow and Kirsten, former Representative Maria Robinson of Framingham, to create a new rule, new law in Massachusetts, which will allow us to continue with what we are doing right now. Now, right now, we are having a meeting that allows for remote participation, so whether you are participating right now from Framingham or Free Town, or you were all sitting in Boston, we could participate with you. We would have fuller representation at these meetings, more boards is heard and better outcomes for that. That, we are still working on that because legislation takes a while to really get that across the finish line. But it is with your partnership that we propose this law. And really, this is one of those, you know, unexpected gifts of COVID, when we learn, hey, really, the world doesn't turn upside down because we have remote participation. So we are doing our part in legislature. I would say to highlight two things. I think you're going to hear more people hear about this, concerns in the Berkshires. One, both these things you're hearing all over the state, I suspect, and that is housing. Housing is important. Here we have very, very serious and ever increasing homelessness issue. If you came in the Wendell Avenue side of the A and M, you had strong evidence of that, that is a place where many of our homeless are now finding a place to nest. And then you won't be surprised to hear from me that when I think of women and girls and what is needed, childcare, childcare and early education. As a matter of fact, I really believe that one of the greatest spotlights that COVID gave us was the issue of childcare and why, you know, women left the workforce in record numbers. I believe that solving childcare and early education was the very center of the reopening and unfortunately it was left aside. So again, I think you're going to hear from people about that here. There's so many people here that I know and I'm so thrilled that people are here, but I'm going to just particularly call out Marissa and Sheila, who have, as I said this evening, been appointed to the newly, Sarah, no, no. That's going to get. Who are appointed to the newly formed Reform Berkshire County Regional Commission. I'm really thrilled that we're getting back the team back together again. And then in addition to that is Sarah, who is here from Long High Leader Centrepiece of Girls Inc. right across the street here. And she has brought, I wish the camera's been shown this. Can you see this with the camera over here? Do I have to tip this? All these young girls were here from Girls Inc. and the Discovery Leadership Program. And I'm really hoping to hear your voices listening too, ladies. I'm really pretty impressed that you're here. And a big treat for all of you is that Latinas 413 are in the house and we're going to hear about their work. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate you all being here and listening to the voices of girls movement.
Thank you very much. I know we're having some sound issues. We're working on them. Please continue to communicate if you can't hear online. A couple of minor notes on logistics before we begin. We are live streaming this event. If your testimony is of a sensitive nature or you do not wish your name, face, or information to be publicly disclosed, please let any member of the MCSW staff know or contact us in the chat. In Zoom, in advance for testimony, we will make every effort to make you feel safe and heard. Additionally, the MCSW makes every effort to accommodate the needs of our participants. If you're joining virtually and require additional support, please message MCSW for assistance. What may also help is the captioning feature is turned on. You may have to turn that on, on your own Zoom. You click on and be able to also see the words. We're going to move quickly this evening, so please be sure we have your contact information to be involved with you afterwards. At our last hearing, I quoted Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, and I'd like to do so again tonight because I think this statement really crystallizes the work of this commission. And she says that justice is about making sure that being polite is not the same thing as being quiet. In fact, oftentimes the most righteous thing you can do is shake the table. So I'd like to thank you for coming to shake the table with us tonight and welcome. And with that, I mentioned Commissioner Back.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here with you all tonight. So to fulfill our mission, the commission conducts regional public hearings across the state to collect testimony and opinions on women's issues and concerns. We're so excited to have the reverse commute to hear you all entrance go. Our public hearings provide a safe and open space for all women and girls in their communities to be heard and share their lived experience and the issues that impact their daily lives. Any subjects surrounding issues that women face or obstacles that hinder the ability for all women to experience equity are welcome topics. And for this, excuse me. And this year, we're also working on reports that are gathering information on particular topics that will be put out to our legislators and governor so that policymakers can hear your concerns. And the subjects that we're focusing on this year are survivors of domestic intimate partnerships, as well as issues impacting LGBTQIA women. And I'd also like to add that if you have issues that you'd like to see us focusing on for our future reports, we have in the past, women of color, early childhood education and childcare and women in the workforce, but we're always happy to hear the topics that you'd like us to report on. This hearing in the public meeting is an opportunity to be yourself, to find others like you and to share your story in a way that will positively influence the work that we do on behalf of all women in the Commonwealth. The MCSW works to create change in the lives of women and your narratives guide our policy and advocacy platform. In the past, our hearings have brought attention to issues such as economic independence and self-sufficiency, domestic violence, access to education and resources that support women and their families and more. Testimony gathered at public hearings directly informs the commission legislative agenda. Tonight, people will hear from all of you about the issues that are important to you and the greater community of the Berkshires. Each speaker will be given about three minutes for their public testimony and I'll be giving you a gentle time reminder to make sure that everyone has joined us this evening and be heard. This is a hybrid hearings. We want to thank you, those of, as those of you who are joining us on Zoom from all corners of the Commonwealth will also be hearing from you today virtually. And afterwards, we encourage all in attendance to share their testimonies with us in writing to inform our work going forward. So if you have something that you're reading from or if you have something that you want to write up, we will accept that over email. And if you're in the room, please talk to us about where to send that. If you're on Zoom, we look for information in the chat. So if we run out of time and we don't get to hear from everybody, which I hope doesn't happen, we will always welcome additional testimony over email. So I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and call our first person to testify, and that is Andrea Wasberg, who is joining us remotely.
Good evening, everyone. Can you, can I, am I, can you hear me clearly?
We can hear.
Awesome. Thank you. I just like to take this opportunity to thank the committee and the commission for allowing me to speak. I am someone who has been born and raised in Berkshire County and I believe in the advocacy of women, young women, older women, all women of Berkshire County and Massachusetts and for many topics, equality in the workplace, equality in medical care, making sure that we have our rights and represented and that we have full access to education, early education for our own children, education, higher education for ourselves and our children, and that that education, equity doesn't mean that you get, you and I both get the same. It means that you and I get what we need and that is different sometimes for each one of us. And I believe as women, we need to have a strong voice for our children, our families and ourselves. And sometimes ourselves need to be put first so that we can do the latter. So with that, I hope to work with this group and be a strong voice across Berkshire County and then across the state to put forward initiatives that will help the commission and the status of women in Massachusetts. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, commissioners, for taking our testimony today. I'm Sarah Cook and I'm pleased to be representing 18 Degrees Family Services for Western Massachusetts, where I serve as the president and CEO. Across over 10 service sites and with 156 employees, we serve thousands of children, young people, parents and caregivers every year in all corners of the Pioneer Valley and the Berkshires and beyond. We support these program participants through our four core service areas. Early Education and Care located here in Pittsfield, Child and Family Wellbeing, Youth Development and Permanency Programs. I am here to tell you what you already know, that the work that we do at 18 Degrees and more broadly, that work that takes place from nonprofit sector, including the caring professionals, a field dominated by women, is grossly undervalued and underfunded. Women in our community work tirelessly to make a better place and they do it all while breaking together the fewest resources available. The nonprofit industry employs one in 10 Americans, making it the third largest workforce in the United States. And women make up a vast majority of nonprofit employees. 18 Degrees dedicated skills and professional workforce is 81% female. Within early education and care, 91% of our staff members are. 18 Degrees staff serve and live in our communities where needs are at an all time high, thanks to the pandemics, inflation, climate change, marginalization and racism, crumbling infrastructure and looming recessions. But the community heroes we rely on to keep us going need more. We're underpaid, overworked and support our participants and the entire community in ways that COVID narrowed the job function. That's a recipe for burnout and my colleagues are too precious for us to risk even one leaving the field. As the world has gone remote, these are the workers who still show up every day, staffing 18 Degrees Early Education Care classrooms and serving over 100 children every day, making home visits to parents who need a little extra support, visiting children in foster care, wherever he went to clockwork and making sure their family's on the support they need, meeting with students in schools and holding drop-in hours during critically important after-school hours, school runs. It upsets me greatly that we can't offer competitive and pride-vesting salaries for this fundamental work, but instead that our entry level salaries would place a single parent within funds extremely low income category or only count for 60% of MIT's living range capital. Even so, we have tried. But despite the fact that we've increased wages twice in the past 12 months, it's increasingly hard for me and my position to remain calm in the face of economic headwinds with no real structural change from our government partners. I want to be clear that the recent impact of economic development has alone helped the one-time and temporary increases we've seen in some of our state contracts which comprise over 8% of our budget flow. But without a meaningful and continuous conversation to lift up this important work, I'm worried that some may think the task is finished. Politically, this will require recommitting how we allocate our resources to the programs that do the work. Culturally, we need better positive reputation among those and those who do it and a true reckoning of the cost of underinvestment in youth women and the children, young people and families we serve. I know many of us have been trying, many of you on the commission and generations before us have tried, and I don't have any better answer on how to do this but to keep trying. But on behalf of a workforce that is overwhelmingly, though not exclusively, female, I know that our recognition needs to extend beyond pizza parties and rented water bottles to real, structural, deep-seated and high-level appreciation and compensation. And we need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before I call the next person, we listened to testify and heard a rumor that somebody younger woman in this room might want to say something. Are we ready to do that? Is that a raise your hand? All right, let's do it. So I will call the woman in the live chat first. And I think we may be able to hear you better if you stand right here, but maybe I need you this mic. How about that?
Hi, my name is Ariana. And I'm from Butler School. I'm a teacher at my chief's school and I'm nine years old and I'm 43. And I want to talk about kindness. There's not a lot of kindness in life, but we're always in need to each other. I don't want to break it. Because wrong, I don't know, they count the things we often do. We often decide and then one day we should change that because it's bad. We should change it.
I think there was one more in there that wanted to say something. All right, I'm going to.
So we're going to try to make this work.
Okay.
So the, yes, maybe we'll have the double mic. Can you all in the virtual room hear me? Can somebody call me, take me down?
Yes.
So who's our next speaker? I think this might probably.
My name is Ariana and I'm in grade and I want to talk about like this school because in my class, people are being very rude to my teacher and I said, where is this? And I want to change that first.
Thank you very much. So it sounded like we're still having some sound difficulties. What I'm going to do is go on to the next person that we have to testify and then we have somebody else. First of all, double mic. We'll try that. Okay? And with that, our next person we have to testify, Vicki Smith, who I believe is remote.
Thank you. I'll make this really brief. Can everyone here, okay? I am on a local school committee and I have a concern about early childhood and daycare. I agree with Tricia that we need to have childcare available for mothers that want to work. And I also agree with the person from 18 Degrees that they're very much underpaid, mostly women in our early childhood programs. My concern, having been the early childhood director in Kansas City for a while, is that we keep the quality based on what's developmentally appropriate for young children. It needs to be play-based and student-centered. We cannot, I mean, we've got four-year-olds doing worksheets. And it's just not appropriate. It's not a good start in life. So I'm hoping that every woman can be an advocate for our young children who can't speak for themselves and that they don't get into, particularly school systems that are dominated by these prescribed programs, that they don't just blindly follow what they're given. So that's my soapbox. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And next, we're going to go with Sinead O'Brien. Do you hear her person?
Online.
Online. Sinead, can you unmute for me?
Yes, hello, I'm here. Can you hear me? Yep. Yes. Hello, my name is Sinead O'Brien and I am the Director of Racial Fairness Berkshires. I'd like to petition for the right to guaranteed free legal representation in civil matters in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This is the so-called civil gideon because it echoes the right for legal representation in criminal matters. So many basic human rights rely on representation in civil courts like shelter, food, safety, health and child custody. Systemic racism caused and continued by the advantages bestowed upon white people results in minorities having less. This sadly often results in tragic disparities of resources of all kinds, as well as wrong hit abuse of better and less than. This obviously affects women, especially here in Berkshire County. In the courthouses, minority women face compounded problems if they do not have legal representation because of poverty, culture and isolation, to name a scant few. because of poverty, culture, and isolation, to name a scant few. We ask women to confront their abusers under the most extreme circumstances and fight for a price above rubies, their children, without representation or even protection. Our state is generous and kind. We have legal aid to be proud of. But despite that, studies find that eighty percent of those needs are unmet. And as a result, housing and family court dockets are often made up of ninety percent pro se litigants. There are also socio-psychological factors at play. People who feel they are under scrutiny or disfavored from the outset may make errors of presentation or otherwise confirm negative opinions they sense. Women generally face heightened scrutiny in the family courts as society judges them harshly if they do not fulfill a role society expects. Much worse is the mother afflicted with addiction, who must not only defend her parenting, but her disease. Civil Gideon is supported by the American Bar Association, and the Boston Bar Association has piloted successful programs for housing court. I am a mother and a former attorney, and due to difficult circumstances, I had to represent myself in a horrific custody situation. Despite my knowledge and former presentation as an attorney, I did not do well. I can only imagine how other women who've never been in a courtroom or minorities who might have a second language or education barrier could possibly handle this situation. I ask that you consider putting forth the Civil Gideon in Massachusetts and backing it with all of your fervor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Natalia DeRusio.
Hi, hello, my name is Natalia DeRusio. I am the Patient Services Manager at Volunteers in Medicine, a free clinic for people who is uninsured or underinsured. I also work as an advisor at the Adult Learning Program at BCC, which is for immigrants. And that's the population that we work. And I am advocating, I also support an echo of Sinead O'Brien's request for legal representation in civil matters, because I agree, there's a lot of barriers to a lot of things that start right there. But I also would like to advocate for access to interpreters and documents in the language of the person for all kinds of services that start with family services. But also, at schools, there's a lot of issues that parents have to face during COVID because of lack of access to documentations and, you know, services in their languages. And the one that I really, really want to advocate is really to resources that support programs for empowerment of women, such as Get Ahead, or that is a program in the city of Pittsfield that has been very successful for people. And we haven't been able to bring that program here to Great Barrington in South County. And I heard and I seen a lot of families that have been able to succeed and move ahead because of what they have learned in that program. So also, there's a money school that is given to women that have been survivors of abuse. That is called Money School, sort of a combination of Get Ahead and Money School for South County. I really would love to see that for all our patients and students down here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another young woman that wants to speak? I saw you in the purple jacket first.
Hi, my name is Bethany. I'm nine. And my sister Kayla, we're back there. And I wanted to talk about school. And a lot of people there at school, so I went to morning side, it is quite close here. So at morning side, there's a lot of disrespect that there is. And we're gonna reset, learn the board. So I wanted to talk about what we can do to inspire. An idea I had was maybe getting a program going on school where everyone talks about an idea that they have to make it a little better.
Thank you very much. We may still be having a few mic issues. The crux of what she said was to come other ways to address bullying. So next, we're gonna go with Viviana Menea. But leave us here virtually.
Hello, chairwoman. I don't believe that they are here, so we can move on.
Okay. So I'll go to the next person. Thank you. And that is Sarah Lulley.
Hi, thank you all for joining us again. Doing a little emotional, especially watching our girls speak, because they're moving. My name is Carol, and I'm a Girl Think Program Director, Girl Think of the Berkshires, I frustrated them for twenty-two years. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I know when I speak here, I'm newly appointed Berkshire Regional Commissioner. I think I might give you two improved things, but when I was thinking, one thing I really wanted to talk about, and I know it's a crisis everywhere, but mental health, and mental health services, especially for youth. And that the wait is like two to three years long, years long. We had a professional development day last week, and we have a woman who has a type of practice. And she can't take mental health clients until she's been in that type of practice for five years. Can we do something about that? Like, can we make some changes? Because we have this crisis going on to change that requirement? So she can take clients, but she can't. The people that need them the most are probably those that have subsidies like mental health. And because it's such a crisis exacerbated by COVID. I mean, I can talk about a lot of different issues, you know, my job, you know, is to inspire all girls to be strong, smart, and bold. So there's some concerns and issues, but the one that really I'm just thinking about right now is the mental health crisis and the lack of services and the crazy amount of need. And what can we do to, what we need more therapists? We need to incentivize going into those kinds of positions and trades and work. And can we do something about this mental health requirement for somebody newly going into a private practice that has to wait five years before they can take mental health clients? And that's really sort of what I was thinking about. And I'm super excited to start this journey so that I can get the concerns of girls and women directly to the people that can sort of make those changes. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ellen, for solving our technical issue and figuring out what's on the camera. I see names beginning with this list, but I knew that...
Yeah, so everybody's motivating your move.
So why don't they start with Carissa Daniels? Ellen, are we not using the mic?
There we go. Hi, Mary. Hi, my name is Carissa Daniels. I'm ten years old and go to school. And I see like a lot of bullying and bad language and disrespecting to all women and girls in my school. And I think that's disrespectful and hurtful to all of the girls in my school. And it's really hurtful and very nice to learn. So I think there should be like a program to talk about what should they add to the rules for women.
Thank you very much. Do we have Mary Beth Metz here? Either online or a person? Let's go with Kalem Ober. And I know I butchered that name, so you gotta start with your name and tell us who you are. I am so impressed. Your mission is to grow bold and strong, smart women. You're starting with the right group, for sure.
Because this is the microphone, so you can just be a little bit closer and just speak your words into the microphone where the owl sits. Just tell us your name and tell us what your thoughts are. What are you thinking about?
I don't know yet.
You mean it's more time?
Okay.
We're just gonna get up here. Liliana?
So Ellen, Ellen, is she okay here or should she come here? Yeah, we're actually having to move. This was our microphone. Yeah, so if you, you just want to come a little closer, that way they can hear you there. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm so excited and nervous to share. I have a lot to say. My name is Liliana. I'm part of the Latinas 413 group, a new organization, young organization, two years. Working towards Latina representation in the Berkshires. Really thinking about the situation and reality that women face in the county. We also face, well, we're immigrants, right? So, and we speak Spanish. Many of us don't speak English, so that's the first barrier, right? And I could share right now that even there is nobody who's translating in Spanish. That's kind of, we just don't want to be the part of the diversity table. We want to be part of the table where the decisions are taken. So I'm calling the sisters to invite us to those tables. It really, I know, just email us, latinas413@gmail.com. I also work with girls, and it breaks my heart sometimes to see all the needs that are in schools. One of my students right there, who will be able to talk and share, yeah, we need to work on so many things for our girls. I'm also a mom of two girls, so I really encourage everybody to do our best. And thank you for doing this. So that's it.
Thank you very much. I think that's a really important point, is that what we do when we invite these hearings is that we ask for people to indicate if they would like another language. And if nobody says it, then we don't do it. So maybe think about how we do that. So I appreciate that. And I believe Mary Beth Metz has joined us, so I'm gonna go ahead and call her first.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Metz. I am a selectwoman in the town of Lenox. I'm also the Chairwoman of our Affordable Housing Trust. And I just have a general sense of pressure that, you know, there are some great organizations out there like Habitat for Humanity that is out there building new units of affordable housing, which we desperately need across the county, across the Commonwealth, across the nation. There has not been a great deal of new housing developed in the last thirty years nationwide. And a lot of that is because of cost, the cost of land, the cost of infrastructure. But the fact that wages are so stagnant, and especially wages in the Berkshires as opposed to the rest of the state, it's very difficult for a family to afford a two-bedroom house, apartment, rent for any two-bedroom unit that is $1,275 a month when, you know, maybe they're lucky that they're making $50,000, especially single parents or single heads of households with children. That's, if you're making $50,000 a year and you're trying to afford a $1,275,000 rent payment or mortgage payment, that's forty-two percent of your income. And that's unaffordable. You're being prosperous. Not to mention utilities, food, medication, you know, transportation, everything else. So I'm just really here to express frustration with the level of wages in our area. Express frustration with the incredibly high escalating cost of housing and how those two things just don't meet. And I'm doing everything that I can with, you know, people who are interested in developing more affordable housing opportunities in Lenox. And hopefully, we'll continue to do these positive things. We're hoping to have the state fund a workforce housing, sixty-five-unit housing project in the coming year, that we have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, and even three units for handicap accessible. We recently purchased two rehabilitated structures that have been sold to two single heads of households with children, which is what this is all about, that the Affordable Housing Trusts are trying to do throughout the Commonwealth. But it is a very expensive, labor-expensive thing to do. And I would just encourage anyone who wants to help with these issues, please get involved. I know it's time-consuming. I know that people have an awful lot on their plates. Housing is a woman's issue primarily. Most of the people on our trust are women. They've been working for years to make these particular projects happen. And I would just implore women to keep going out there with your free time, which I know we don't have a lot of, and volunteer to be on planning boards, be on zoning boards with y'all, be on housing trusts, and, you know, any kind of committee that strikes your fancy, because your voices are required to make change. But keep it up. Please, you know, women, continue to volunteer. I know that, you know, we volunteer in numbers that are much larger, and we do a lot of really important work that's never compensated. But I just thank you for everything that you do, everybody who's here tonight, and continue to fight for this fight.
Thank you very much. Ariana? America?
Hi, everyone. I'm America Lopez, and I'm one of the community health workers at Volunteers in Medicine. And I am also part of Latinas 413, and I wear many hats in the community. But I feel like all the hats that I wear intersect in one way or another. And this time, I would like to take this opportunity to advocate for mental health services for young women, uh for Latino women specifically. Sapar, Yason, and Abed Sherfield. Um I've noticed that many of the girls that just come here have a lot of uh trauma. They have experienced a lot on their ways here, and sometimes they don't have access to support in their own language. We are so, I know that that's an issue that it's across the county, and it's not only for bilingual or for Spanish-speaking people. But um I feel like we're doing the work for um people who are the majority, but still these girls need to be supported and seen and talk about their um the trauma and all the things that they are carrying and that are not allowing them to um to just perform as we would expect in school. The second thing I would like to advocate for is educational and advancement, advancement opportunities for these girls and also for all other um immigrant women in the county. We know that uh as my friend Liliana was mentioning, um language access is one of the biggest barriers for immigrant women who don't speak the language. We have the honor to stand up here and talk and like make our voices heard for those many of us who are not here and have so many great, important things to say, and they are behind just listening. And it's not that we have the, we know what's going on, they know what's going on, but we get to have the uh privilege to talk. And the third thing I would like to advocate is childcare options for um single women who are the heads of households. Uh we know that that's an issue that is important too. But still, I feel like there's never, um you know, we always need more. And I think as a mother of a girl, uh as a single mother, I think and as a the friend of many of uh single mothers who are raising their own children, I think that it is important to just say it one more time.
Thank you. Next, I have Tanya Romero.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tanya Romero, uh also part of Latinas 413. I'm an Ecuadorian native. Um I moved here when I was eighteen. Uh so it was, it was a challenge learning the language. I came with a lot of dreams. I got to college, be a medical doctor, uh run my own business someday, all these ideas. But I think like language was a, a huge barrier in moving through the system. It was very challenging. Still today, I, I keep seeing the same pattern, uh accessing uh different scholarships. I was fortunate to be able to do that, but I know a lot of people, uh young uh kids that are moving to these areas, they're trying to move forward to their, to their education, and it's not accessible for them. So that's something that as Latinas 413, we wanted to motivate, and in a way, we were able to do some of the scholarships to some of the young people that wanted to continue with their education. And the other big thing that I also, I got my bachelor's degree. I still wanted to continue with my education. But the one thing that I noticed was that we don't really have access to financial education. That's huge. Um so I pushed myself to learn on my own, and I noticed that there's so many people that they don't know like how to invest their money, and that's a thing for a lot of kids, even like young kids, that they can start doing when um from their school, and I don't think like the school system offers that. So I've noticed like you guys, like in Palonia, you guys offer some programs and webinars, but everything was kind of like on the Boston area. So that, ah, I hope you guys can bring some of that here too, so that would be amazing to educate our community. Uh there's opportunities, and I think uh we can grow better as a community. Uh the other big thing too, a lot of people are trying to open their own businesses. There's not a lot of resources for them. Um our Latino community, they have the knowledge, they have the experience, the professionalism, the living from their country. And, and it here is just like a barrier. Um they cannot go past that. So that's something that we could also assist and help, so they can also be part of this community. They are part of the community. Um so I think that's something that I wanted to show you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the last testimony. We do have a little time. Thank you. Sonia Pacheco. And we do actually have a few more minutes. So after Sonia, if there's someone else that did want to share thoughts, either in person or online, we do have time. So just shoot a message to, to us on the chat.
Buenas noches para todas.
Hi, everyone.
Y mi nombre es Sonia Pacheco y en un testimonio. Al llegar a, a este país.
I'm Sonia Pacheco, and when I came to this country.
Vine a descubrir que la mujer y merecemos respeto.
And when I arrived here, I discovered that we are women and deserve to be respected.
Vengo de un país donde la mujer es sometida y violenta.
I come from a country where women are uh subjugated? Subjugated and um and abused.
Soy una mujer que fue abusada sexualmente.
I was abused sexually.
Y aquí puedo poner mi cara y decir que cuando conocí a Latinas 413.
And I come here to say that when I uh joined Latinas 413.
Aprendí a amarme y a respetarme.
I learned to love myself and respect myself.
Y a darme el amor propio que todas las mujeres merecemos.
And to give the love, uh that love that we all women deserve.
Como mujeres debemos apoyarnos.
As women, we should, should support each other.
Sostenernos unas a otras.
Hold each other.
Y al contrario de herirnos y de ofendernos.
And contrary to hurt ourselves or offend ourselves.
Es tomarlo de la mano.
To hold ourselves.
Para que todas seamos una.
So we all can be one. Thank you very much. And a strong testimony by your chairman, Jeremy here. Thank you. Dana Wollet?
I wasn't expecting to speak today, and we see some familiar faces from BCC, and that's awesome. Um my name's Dana Wollet. I'm retired Air Force. I just retired in February after twenty-eight years. Yeah, I was the only female flight engineer all the time I was there. Um I'm here tonight with Girl Inc., and I'm a mentor. I'm a volunteering, I'm a mentor with a housing program that they have called the Discovery Program, um where they go out and they do so many things. So we just got through cooking. We had Thanksgiving dinner tonight. A whole party of girls came over. Um and Carly was generous enough to ask me if I would volunteer, um so initially it's been great. I did not expect to be here tonight, and I was just so motivated by everybody speaking, and your shirt says it all. Who owns that? Yeah, that's my life. Um I, I was thinking about it before I came here tonight. I actually have homework to do because I'm still in school myself. I'm trying to get my degree now after my military service. And I was like, what, you know, are issues that women would be talking about? What, you know, would be, first of all, how did people even find out about this meeting? I had never heard about it, uh except for through, you know, Girl Inc. and, and that they were coming to not represent. Um and which, you know, there could be a lot of money spent there as far as new equipment for them, things like that, remodels. I'm sure the kitchen could use some help. Um but um everything that I thought of has been mentioned here tonight. Housing, affordable housing in the Berkshire is crazy. I mean, people, you know, like, like we were saying earlier, um you know, they can't afford housing. And, and how do we get that built and what does that look like? I mean, these are things that, I mean, I've been identified, and I think, you know, they can, they can find solutions to get them done. Um uh also to uh the court system, um with women trying to represent themselves in these legal battles. Um the attorney that had, she was a attorney herself and wasn't practicing at the time and had to represent herself in a custody battle. And, you know, those are emotional times for women to be going to court, you know, battling supposedly could be even a, a, you know, a, a violent spouse, you know, or something, uh gaslighting. Um you, uh you know, while you're trying to go through these, you know, difficult times and then actually fighting for custody of your children in your future, while you're also trying to secure housing now that you're on your own and you decided to separate and move forward with your life and go in a different direction of, you know, positiveness and, and bring your children with you. Those, those types of, of services would be really helpful, I could see, for people going through that stuff. Affordable housing was one, um the court system was one that we had thought of. I had discussed with some friends. Um and then also to um the nonprofit community that really, they catch everything. I mean, these, these women that are working in the nonprofit and for the NGOs, and I mean, they catch everything that falls through. And uh they're, they're people's last resort, um especially in uh small areas like Berkshire County. I mean, it's, it's small populations, large area, small population. Um but the, the housing issue really seems like something, I mean, something could be done about that. I, I would really be interested in talking to you about boards and, and things like that, landlord situations and things. And I, I don't think, right, I think now in this time, I don't know if we're able, if we're effectively communicating to the people that can help. Um you know, I know there's people out there that can help, you know, I had no idea about this, this, you know, uh forum tonight. I'm sure there's a lot of other women in the community that didn't know as well. Uh and, and I think that if, you know, we maybe effectively communicate these issues a little bit better, um then maybe we'll be able to draw the people, and men and women, because they want to help as well too. Um anybody that would be willing to help with these, with these issues that, that women have. You know, uh it's crazy to say that, uh I, I think in a way, we're still, the issues that we're talking about tonight are the same issues that women have been talking about for like the last seven years. You know, uh fair pay, you know, equal pay, better pay, uh you know, housing, um you know, representation in court. Um you know, voting rights, but who knows what's coming next? But it seems like these issues are issues that we've been talking about for seventy years now. And so I just wanted to get up and stand up on behalf of the girls here in the audience and say how much I support you. And I, I'm really proud to stand up, stood up here tonight and talked about how bullying is an issue and how people need to be nicer to each other, and that there can be like a program that comes together. And maybe even, I know there's probably people at the school board that are listening, invite some speakers then. Some psychiatrists or psychologists to come in and lead these, these groups for you guys so that you can get back on the same page again. Um and just diversity is huge. BCC is really good with diversity. But like I said, to give them the information out about scholarships that are available. You know, I have no money to, to pay for my college either. And, and without getting out there and finding out like, oh, Smith Ada Comstock Program, twenty-four to sixty years old, you can go to school, you know, I mean, I, but unless you know about those paths, then you know, that, that's then you, then you will never find out, you will never go. Um but um so thank you guys for having this forum. I found it really fascinating. I can't wait to tell everyone about it. And thanks you guys for representing Latinas 413. That's awesome. Yeah, that's awesome.
And you so much for sharing that, and we are always welcome to, you know, bring in the ideas for getting the word out. We have social media where you can follow us. We, you know, reach out to our electeds, shout us out and show up, and we love that. Thank you, Rep. Boobie. But please, Ellen is our marketing guru, and if you have ideas, please let us know. We are so open. We want to reach everybody so we can hear from you and bring that back.
Absolutely. I was also thinking with all the students that we have speaking up, bowling in the room, that we can share this recording when this is our tenth school board. But this is live recorded, but it also stays online, so we'll make sure to get that. So next, I have virtually testifying, testifying is Maria Arias.
Hi. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. Hi, I'm Maria Arias, and I'm a family engagement specialist. I work in the community in Berkshire County uh with families that are involved with ECF. So I agree with everything that has been said about women needing education, about needing more support. I agree with all of that because I see it on a daily basis pretty much. Uh but I also represent a small co-op of women, of immigrant women. Um and I see also the needs for us immigrant women to have more support in terms of uh opening small businesses and, and, you know, thriving in the community. Um you know, our co-op, we've been trying to get funding so our women can open different small businesses like, you know, cooking or a bakery or uh, you know, doing things with um sewing machines and all of that. And it has been really, really difficult, um because uh what we notice sometimes is like when the city gets uh be funded, sometimes it's more groups, uh you know, a small group of women, especially immigrant women. Um I think we are overlooked, and sometimes we don't hear about it when, until it's too late. Um so you know, like, we want to be taking into consideration, you know, when there is funding available. Uh you know, and, and also uh sometimes we need the education to apply for that funding, you know? Sometimes we, we have the language barrier that so many people mentioned before. And so we lag behind because a lot of us maybe don't speak the language or can not read or write. But that shouldn't be a, a factor in us nobody, you know, the, the uh funding to start a business, you know, and be given the opportunity like everybody else. So um I really, you know, wanna, wanna, um, you know, the commission to really think about women in general, but also immigrant women, you know, when, in terms of funding for, uh to start a small businesses and to kind of, uh you know, make that economy uh for immigrant, uh for immigrant women more available and more thriving, you know? So um but I also agree, you know, with every singer that will say so. And I want to congratulate the girls from Girls Inc. too, uh for everything that they say. I'm very proud of you girls for, for showing up and for talking. Uh my own daughter used to go to that program, so I know you guys do an amazing job there. And, and you know, agencies like those are the places that we need to continue supporting because they really make a difference. Um I can see it in my own daughter, you know, that participated in there since she was a baby pretty much. Um and she stopped last year, but she went for almost twelve years, and that make a huge difference in terms of how she can express herself, how she, you know, learn to swim and learn to get along with others and all of that. So um I really want to you guys to continue supporting that kind of program too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, I have Carly, who is here in person.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carly Garofalo.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carly Garipano. I work for Berkshire County Kids Place, which is a child advocacy center for Berkshire County. But tonight I'm here with these lovely ladies back here with Discovery Program. And I wanted to start by thanking you, Sonia, because you were, you standing up here really gave me the courage to come up here. So it's just as a testimony to one voice can inspire so many people out. And I am the coordinator for youth impacted by commercial sexual exploitation. So I, the biggest thing that I would like to suggest would be to starting these conversations about body safety and learning how to set boundaries with youth and adults. And the earlier that you can start these conversations, the better off. Because it's a scary topic, but the reason it's scary is because it's so unknown. And the only way to change that is to learn as much as you can about exploitation, about sexual assault, about rights. And the more knowledge you have, knowledge is power. So education is key. Bringing awareness is the number one thing that will kind of help the scaryness of it.
Thank you. Next we have Sheila.
Hi, I'm Sheila Levante and I am a professional fundraiser. I want to say thank you so much, Sonia. Your testimony is so important for you to speak on behalf of all women, but BIPOC women in particular. So I am a fundraiser by trade. I have been in the nonprofit field since I can remember. I graduated from Arizona State University, those sun levels, with a degree in nonprofit leadership and management. Linda Carter, the original One Woman, was in Arizona. That's where she lives. And so when I grew up, I thought I'm going to be one woman and I'm going to go ahead and make sure that I save the world. What I didn't know in the nonprofit field is that sometimes you actually have to save yourself. A recent report, Speaking Truth to Power in Fundraising, a toolkit produced in partnership with the Association of Nonprofit Philanthropy and Fundraising Professionals, looked at the sexual harassment for those in the fundraising profession. Berkshire County has more nonprofits per capita than anywhere else. And as you heard from Sarah from 18 Degrees earlier today, that industry continues to grow. And the number one, the majority of those that make up the fundraising profession are women. So this report went ahead and released that 42% of fundraisers have experienced sexual harassment in the past two years. This was 2018, 2020. 76% have experienced it throughout their entire career. BIPOC and the LGBTQ community fundraisers experience the most egregious forms of sexual harassment, discrimination, and bullying than any other population. Breaking this down by harasser over the past two years, 32% of fundraisers experienced sexual harassment by a coworker and 24 by an external stakeholder. This could be a donor, this could be a board member, this could be just a volunteer. 10% of the BIPOC fundraisers said that in the last two years, they've had to endure behavior, including pressure for sexual favors and stalking. So I'd like to share briefly with my own experience because Sonia, you have moved me so much. Today at 11:30, I actually met with my HR team at my employer because I have a situation where a donor from a company that I used to work for, who I had a no trespass order against, has decided to follow me to my new place of employment. So my employer is taking the red steps to protect me. The BIPOC women and women who come from low-income families, who really are the breadwinners or the caregivers in their family, do not have the power and privilege to really speak out. They are more likely to stay silent because they know that harassment and discrimination and bullying could also mean the end of their career and the end of the support of their family. I think it is extremely important to start talking to kids young about body boundaries. And I think it's extremely important now for organizations, especially in the nonprofit community, to have standards and guidelines about harassment against constituents. You have it against coworkers, but what does it look like when a donor trespasses against you? What does it look like when a board member makes advances towards you? Often because philanthropy is so white male dominated, it is hard when you look at privilege and power for board members, for organizational directors and presidents to really want to put in sort of guidelines and protection. But we need to start dismantling that system of power and oppression and privilege, especially in the fundraising community. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Next I have Italian virtually.
Hi. Hi, I just honestly, I learned about this really late and I tried to, to move everything to be able to be here. But I wanted to also speak as an immigrant myself, how important it is to keep supporting any kind of efforts and programs that are in the area for ESL classes. We have, I work at, at two places, but at the, the learning program, we have a waitlist that is triple the amount of students that we can get because of funding. And my understanding is that the funding has been cut for this, for this year. And, you know, is, if, that's the first barrier that people face here when they immigrate to the country to be able to learn the language. So that's, you know, the first, the first one that I would like to advocate. The second one would be a funding for free women healthcare and reproductive care for people who is not eligible for, to access insurance, like all immigrant women. And, you know, it's so important to support these agencies that are doing this kind of work because nobody else can do it. All the legal barriers that are there for people who have no access to immigration status make it way harder to access this kind of services if you add the language barrier that goes with that. And I would also love to advocate for immigration services. There is a lot of limitation and we have, we're dealing with a humanitarian crisis here. A lot of people coming through the border and a lot of people who need assistance with immigration attorney, including women who are sometimes victims of a crime or victims of abuse or domestic violence through their partners or husbands. They, sometimes they don't have access to pro-vonor representation and therefore their voices are silenced. And the fourth one that I would like to really advocate is for financial support for training of diverse leaders and diverse groups. Because that's an important really steps into really making places more diverse. We need to support organizations like Latinos 413 so they can really, you know, work in this mission to, 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 to mentor and to provide access to, 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 to empower women, really helping to, to teach and to train leaders, diverse leaders for the community. Not only Latinos, I really think that is for all the community. There's a lot of people coming from Africa here in Berkshire County that also need to be, their voices need to be elevated. There's a lot of women there that are very silent and invisible. And I think, you know, we are getting a little stronger in the Latina community, but there's also these other voices that need spaces and the resources to be able to be able to find their voice.
Thank you. Now we have Catherine.
Yeah, hello, everybody. I'm, I'm very excited to be here and hearing everybody with their testimony and all the things that we can do to help the women in the county. I'm Catherine Chafron. I'm with Latinas 413 as well. I echo everything from the basics, speaking the language, understanding that's why Latinas 413, we try to translate as much as we can, the content that we see, things like that. Because it's so important to see things in your own language and it's important to understand what's happening. I have to echo Natalia and that's one of the things that I was going to say about leadership, training leadership, training leaders for the tomorrow. It's so important, especially immigrant leaders, because we need to be at a, we need to be serving a different table. Our voice needs to be heard, even if we don't, we don't speak the language or something. It has to, there has to be a way of access in that. I came here when I was 15. I was undocumented. I had so many barriers to go to college. I didn't, that, that's one of the things that I have to echo Tanya. It's so important to open those doors for people that are undocumented, kids that came here. And now after a recipient, but that opens so many doors. Now in Canton, I work at Smith Watson, a local company here. But if, without having that access, I wouldn't have been able to reach my profession. And my sister, she's an engineer as well. So it's so important to give kids that are coming from other countries those opportunities because they are going to change so many things. And I know it's so hard. And, you know, when I faced it when I was, when I was going to school. Yeah, no, you're not a resident, you're not a citizen, but we've been living here for 10 or more years, yes? So you have to pay out-of-state tuition in order to be able to access school here. DCC gave me the opportunity to be there taking night classes or online classes. And then once I got my DACA, I was able to go to UMass. But I don't know, it's, I see kids that are coming out of high school that are undocumented right now and they don't have, they want to go to school. They want to open up, they want to do something and it's so hard to find, find those ways. Like it's, it's like, we're still not talking about it. Like the schools don't want to talk about it and it's so important to be addressed because we can create so many amazing leaders. Girls that I see, that we have in our mentorship program, have girls that they want to go to college and they want to be psychiatrists, they want to be nurses, doctors, they want to be, I don't know, so many amazing things that. It's so sad because I'm being in those shoes that it's so, I feel so important to be, that I want to say, what, what, what can we do? How can we help this? And yeah, it worked out for me, but it can't work out for so many others. Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, we've had the end of our testimonies. The use of activities to share their voice. Thank you so much for coming. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner DiCarvalo to close this up.
Thank you so much. But first I just wanted to give a message to one of our testifiers today. Yo hablo portugués. Solo siento por si mi palabras no es perfecto. Mas quería expresar sentimiento que sus palabras tienen poder. Entonces muchas gracias pela suas palavras. So eyes for sharing, thanks for people sharing their words and the power of their words. And thank you so much for joining us for our first in-person hearing in more than two years. While the issues we face are multiple, together we can tackle anything. So we invite you to share your testimony with us in writing and to inform our 2022, 2023 legislative priorities and future data reports on these crucial issues. We value your input and we would be grateful if you would take our brief exit survey. Physical surveys are available or you can scan the QR code upon leaving. We will also be sharing the link in the chat and the follow-up email. And we invite you to stay plugged into the MCSW, join our newsletter, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or LinkedIn, or join us for any of our upcoming events. A few important upcoming dates. We have January 19th. These are all in 2023. In January 19th, we have the Lynn Public Hearing, which will also be hybrid, I believe. So feel free to participate in those virtually. And we have May 24th, our Advocacy Day at the Massachusetts State House. And in June of this coming year, we will have our 2023 Commonwealth Heroin's. So thank you again for joining us.
Thank you very much, everyone. I want to thank the staff for witnessing, especially our director, Shania. Thank you for being here and everyone who's seen you and looking at you.